And that's something that as a city, we have to submit a preliminary budget by May 4th. So that is why we are late. Thank you all of those that are joining us. Let's make sure that we are good as far as conducting the business of this council meeting. And it is the council meeting of Centerville City Council of April 20th being held by Zoom. I will first read the determination. Well, let's make, yeah, I'll do the termination and then we'll do the roll call. It looks like we have the people anyway. In accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074 of the Utah Open and Public Meeting Act, I have determined that conducting electronic meetings in the Centerville City Council within anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. This determination is based on the facts and circumstances surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic. Considering the continued number of COVID-19 case counts in Utah, meeting in an anchor location presents substantial risks to the health and safety of those in attendance because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain at City Hall. Thank you. This mess, this meeting is live on YouTube as well as on Zoom. And I could see that it's been recorded live on YouTube on the screen. So let's do a roll call. Councilman McEwen.
Present.
Councilwoman Meacham. She's there. She said, "Present." Thank you. Councilwoman Ivy.
Present.
Councilwoman Nitz.
Present.
And Councilwoman Fillmore.
Present.
Thank you, all five of you for being here and taking your, the time to be here this night. We have all five of our council members present and accounted for tonight.
Question, I'm having trouble getting on live again on YouTube.
Okay, I don't know who can answer that for us. Brent or Jennifer? I'm not looking at YouTube, so I don't know, but it says YouTube on top that it's live, or are we?
I have it pulled up on my computers and it's, and it's recording live. So I, I maybe try refreshing your browser or something.
Okay, on our webpage, let's see if I can get it. I'm not seeing a live on YouTube. April 6th is the only councilman meeting it's giving me an option for. George, can you get it?
Let's see if I can see it in a second. I'm pulling up another device, so if anyone has, is checking or can check faster than I can, I'm totally fine with that. I'll take no offense at that. I'm here to offend Councilwoman McEwen. I'm just kidding. I'm not pulling it up on my other laptop either.
So shouldn't I go to our webpage and then go to the Centerville City YouTube channel? Is that the way to get to?
Yeah, the link that we have on the left menu bar directs you to our YouTube.
Yeah, it's just bringing up March 16th, March 24th, and April 6th. We don't have a live.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the live one as well.
I just, I just copied the live link into the chat. Try, try opening that and see if it gets you there.
Well, we're concerned that, the concern here, Jennifer, is just understanding if our residents can get there. So we, we can possibly get there, but we want to make sure residents get there. Well, but, but the stream is running, so yeah, the convenience factor isn't there, but the stream is there. So we are, we are live on YouTube.
But nobody can see us.
Well, they'd have to go to the Centerville City channel and then click on the live stream to get there.
But it's not there. I'm on it. I'm on the Centerville City channel and there's no live stream.
Yeah, is that the Centerville City channel? Is that the Centerville City website?
The Centerville City channel. Is there a YouTube channel?
It shows that there's two watching and it's showing a live stream. But it's marked as the April 2021 City Council Work Session, Regular Session. So I think we're okay on that part.
People watching it, then that means we're, somebody's getting it.
Somebody's found it then.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
All right.
But you're right, Robyn, we got to fix the link on the website to make it easier.
So moving on, we, we have a special guest here tonight, Pastor Lauren Pancrits with us. Welcome, Lauren. And he is going to give us a prayer or thought this evening. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, well, thank you for, for having me. And thank you, you are, for all the work that you do for us all. We certainly appreciate the time and energy you put into making our city just the great place that it is. So thank you for, thank you for all that you do. And let me, let me pray. Father in heaven, we are grateful to, again, live in such a beautiful place that we live. I've lived in other places and really this is a wonderful, beautiful place. And so we're just grateful for, for what you surround us with and just the beauty around us. God, we're grateful as we enter into spring, just seeing some new signs of life again. Just a great thing, very encouraging. We're grateful for that, God. Grateful for the, the men and women that serve this city, especially our city council members. Lord, we know that you are the source of wisdom that we need. God, you give us the wisdom as we ask. And so, Lord, we do just ask on the behalf of our city leaders today, God, that you would impart to them just an amazing amount of wisdom as they try to balance so many different interests and needs. And God, it's not, not an easy task by any means. And we know that it's a big sacrifice, God, many nights wrestling with issues and trying to come to peaceable places of understanding from different people in our community, God. And so we ask that you would just give them the wisdom they need. Pray you'd guide their decisions and their actions, Lord, that they would be honoring to you and uplifting to our citizens here, God. We just want to be able to live peaceable and godly lives. And we're grateful for the context here that you've laid. And the people that protect that and guide that, Lord, is grateful for them. Or we pray that you would bless them as they serve, God. We pray that, Lord, you protect them and our city leaders from temptations that may come their way, God. And we ask that, or the way that they lead would just be honorable, God, that it would be full of character and, and that our city would just be able to grow and flourish because of it. So we ask this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
You guys, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Pastor. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Always a pleasure to have you here with us.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the next thing. If you'll all rise and I will repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. Pull the flag up for us, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God. Thank you. Next thing we have is the open session. This is a chance for anyone to just to bring up anything that they may want to bring up. On your screen, you will see a dial number, a meeting number, a passcode. I will look for hands being raised. I welcome council members or anyone else, if I miss one, to let me know. But this is a chance to just comment on anything that you might like to comment on the community. Take two to three minutes to do so. And so that is now available, the open session. I will give a few seconds to search for hands and calls, that type of thing. So it's open. I am not seeing any hands raised. Let me just double check one last time. That's not getting any texts that anybody's called through. Yep, so thank you. We, no participants tonight on the open session, so we will move on. Thank you. Let's go to the item of the business tonight in our meeting. The first item of business is a National Historical Register Application Review. This is the review of the Leroy and Alice Chaney Property Nomination to the National Historical Register. McKenzie is here to talk about this. McKenzie, take it away.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. So this item would typically be seen by our Landmarks Commission, but as stated in the staff report, we are not fully staffed with appointments to that commission at the moment. So I'm going to share the item, the staff report. Okay, so we've received a nomination for the Leroy and Alice Chaney home, which is at 676 North Main Street. And the State Historic Preservation Office asks for a review from the local government just to double check for errors and to give any extra insight that the local government might have about each nominated property. So in the staff report and in the attachments is the 43-page document, the intensive level survey. I don't expect you to have read all of it, but it's a pretty fascinating read if you do go through it about the history of that home and why it is significant architecturally for the area. Specifically, it is one of the only styles of its type in Centerville and Davis County. So staff recommends just a review of that intensive level survey and a recommendation for approval of the nomination. This does not mean that the state nomination committee will approve this nomination, but this is just giving Centerville's stamp saying, "We reviewed it. We either have issues with what has been provided or we don't have issues with, with what has been provided." So if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Are there questions for McKenzie on this application?
It was a really great read. I always like the intensive level surveys. I move that we, what is it that you need from us? That we recommend this historic site to the state with, that we recommend it from Centerville City, having reviewed the documents and found it acceptable.
I'll second that.
We have a recommendation and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 It should be note, thank you, McKenzie, it should be noted that this is something now that it's been nominated, that it's, will be presented at the State Historic Preservation Review Board on Thursday, May 20th. Is that correct, McKenzie?
That's correct. And there is a Zoom link to that meeting if you would like to attend in the attachments.
Okay. Who do we, McKenzie, normally have attending that? Are you going to be listening in on that?
I will be listening in on that.
Great, great to hear. So, so there's a Zoom meeting in that letter in the, in the information. And so we admonish any of you that want to join in to watch. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, we're moving to the second item of business. This is discuss the Fourth of July celebration. And I'm going to kick that off by first saying that I hope in discussing this that we can all have clear, clear minds and open minds in, in what we may be doing here. And this should be something of joy that, that we're going to, that we're going to do here. And I got to just be totally honest with you. It's been difficult for me over the last couple of weeks. But this is what, I will kick it off, that I will give you background on, on what we found so far, okay? Number one, about a little over two months ago, I did in Mayor's Message, mentioned, I welcomed any thoughts, suggestions, activities, that type of thing. And then two weeks ago, I did as well, too. I haven't heard much from any council members on it. And so I've been, been doing my homework and spent extensive time over the last couple of weeks of what, what I feel is possible and what I feel is not possible. So I will just try and present the facts as I've found them, okay? We've, we've looked as far as when it comes to the location. We've looked at a number of items. We've looked at parking. We've looked at, talked with the fire chief. We've looked, my big thing has been being inclusive of the people within our city, including as many as possible. And another thing that I've been concerned about is we still have many people with a lot of fears about COVID. And I want to create a situation that those that want to attend can attend, even if, because all of us have different levels of concern and fears within, in relation to the COVID. And then I met with the county health official, myself and our Fourth of July chairs. And we toured both of the parks that we've talked about in question. Last week, we looked at Community Park and we looked at Smith Park. And the county health official brought up something that we looked at very strongly. Obviously, the size of the parks are quite different. Based on county guidelines, we would have to do contract contact tracing at this, at Smith Park. The Community Park, we would be able to put up some sorts of cones or whatever, to tell people the space and that type of thing. To, and we would not have, according to Eric at the County Health Board, we would not have that contract tracing requirement. I have also talked with other mayors and Fourth of July committees in other cities. And it's all over the board as far as what people are doing. And this, this discussion does say discuss options for Fourth of July celebration, location, fireworks, concert, parade, et cetera. Obviously, we have Fourth of July chairs and committees that are willing to help, but in the interest of time, we, there's only so much that can be done. I have seen across the board, different things being done. West Bannifol has canceled their parade and they are just doing fireworks. They, they did move the, the location of their fireworks last year from their traditional place to, to the golf course, which was more compatible for, for the COVID at the time. North Salt Lake here is just doing fireworks. Clearfield, Kaysville have a number, number of different things going. And so we have looked at what we may be able to do and may not be able to do as well, too. And some of the things we've discussed that we could, could do would be a concert in the park, fireworks in, at the park. Maybe some booths and some games. And in the interest of time and health, we didn't know if the breakfast would be able to happen. Maybe a children's parade, but not maybe, but not, not the big parade. And so that's what's been discussed. I'm strongly recommending that, because like I said, trying to include as many people as possible and because of the contract tracing and the spacing that, that we have that, that festivities at, at the Community Park. Now, we also met with staff yesterday, yeah, yesterday on Monday. And when I say staff, we met with Bruce, the chief, Chief Child, and Brent and myself and the Fourth of July Chair. And they are on the screen as well, too, if they would like to talk about, I guess we don't have Bruce here, but we got the chief here and we have Brent here and we have Fourth of July Chair here. I would like them to chime in with anything that they have as far as, as, as parking and that type of thing. Oh, I talked with the fire chief at the fire board meeting yesterday. And he is, is saying that they would be able to support a fireworks show on, on the 3rd of July. So those that were in the meeting yesterday, do we have any comments from any, any of you? Keith, you pulled it straight up.
Yeah, so we had a discussion about it, talked about the two different locations as a possibility. Subsequent to that meeting, I had a small staff meeting, I'll call it. I had one of my sergeants and Lieutenant Ackerson, who've both been in charge of our responses and our planning for several years during the Fourth of July, so I can get their input and perspective on it. We, we can handle it at both locations. It would require about the same amount of manpower, whether it's at the traditional location or down at the Community Park. I do feel like that there are some benefits to the Community Park that, that caused me to lean in that direction, that it would be a better location to do it. I feel like there's better, the parking situation is better, the road widths are better. The amount of area available for people to spread out in the Community Park is, it's over 10 times larger than the Smith Park. The location where the fireworks are proposed to be set off, in my opinion, is a lot better location. It's much safer there. I've always had real concerns about where the fireworks are going off at the school here. It's, you've got to be 175 feet away from any structure, which makes it to where they have to place the fireworks in just a real small area. It's like six feet wide and I don't know how long, but not very long. You got to have people up on top of the school to be ready to put fires out. We, every year, we get people that, that have debris that fall into their eyes because they're so close and they're looking up in the sky. And so debris from the firework inevitably land in people's eyes. That happens pretty much every year, something, some of it's still kind of hot. So there's, that's always been somewhat of a concern of mine, having it, the fireworks so close to all the buildings and people. And where, where it's being proposed, there's a lot more room there. It's further away from structures. And so we can do it either way. We can support it either way. The, I guess the advantage to doing it at the traditional location is we already know the plan. We already know where to put people. We've done it many times. We haven't done it at this, at the Community Park, obviously, but it shouldn't, it wouldn't be that hard to plan. The roads, so where we have a real problem with parking traditionally is on 300 North. That road gets super clogged up. It becomes a one-way road. And then you get traffic trying to go both ways and it just gets plugged up. And then we have to block 200 East because that is an area where it's too close to where the fireworks are going off. And that's another narrow road. Parish Lane becomes pretty crowded from Main Street East. We can't really accommodate parking on Main Street. So typically what, what most people do, people are going to park where it's the closest possible place to the event, so that they have the least amount of walking to do. So they're initially going to start trying to park on the streets close by. And then they go out from there into the subdivision areas, Church Park and lots, Dick's Market and Walmart, and then come through the intersection there. So down at Community Park, there is more established parking available at the park itself. The park, the, the Smith Park has very little parking established there. And a lot of that has to be used for the event itself. So there is more parking available down there. 400 West is a better road to park on both sides of the road. We would have to worry about lighting down there and we would have to station an officer to help get people across the road. On the frontage road, I would expect some people trying to, or wanting to park out there. So we, we could consider whether or not we would allow that on the west side of the road. And if we did, then we'd want to, well, either way, I think we'd want to put a reduced speed through there. Make it 25 and put up some temporary lighting. If we're allowing people to cross that road, I think we needed some better lighting down there. So, but then you've also got some churches, well, the church right across the street from the Community Park, there's quite a bit of parking there and, and the streets around there are a little bit, are wider, along with the church over at 1100 North and 4th West. So it's, it, just looking at the map and consulting with my people, everyone here from a public safety point of view, agree that the better location would be the Community Park, but again, we can support it either way.
So I just want to say, probably something I did say in my comments. To me, it's, it's having a, and you heard this two weeks ago, a celebration of some type and where our, where our citizens can, can feel excited, they can get out there and, and safe as well, too. And so those are, those are the various considerations that I'm looking at. And hence, hence some of the activities you may not normally do, whether they're feasible as well to do as, as well. There's not many cities trying to pull off a parade. And like I said, West Bannifol had canceled their parade as well, too. So may, maybe our Fourth of July Chair, maybe you can throw out there, since she just popped on the screen, what type of activities that, that in the timing that we have, we'd be able to do as, as far as, well, with you and your committee. Kim, do you want to tell, pop on and tell us what?
Sorry, I was muted. I apologize. Do you want, does it, do I need to show the, the map or should I have a map on my screen? I can share if that's helpful, or if it's not, I don't need to do that. I have, if you want, I have, also have visuals of all the parking, but I really feel like they've really gone over the parking.
They, yeah, they've, they've covered that. Let's go over some of the activities based on when we met with the county health official. And, and some of you that may be in the know about health guidelines as well, too, please chime in. But what type of activities you, you feel we could do with the guidelines that were laid out to us?
Okay, um, so.
And the timing you have to be able to do them in.
Yes, still working through them, but I, I feel like we could still probably start and make it an all-day event since we are not able to do, make it a traditional two-day event. Just with COVID and with the lack of time to be able to plan. And we've been told for so long that we couldn't do certain things. And so being restricted to the level of, you know, social distancing, at least here at this location, we'll be able to spread out. We could still have, easily have a music concert, the fireworks, of course, that evening. Have local talent. The fireworks, of course, that evening, have local talent throughout the day along with possibly different dance studios that will bring families there, possibly a Dutch oven cook-off we've talked about. Still looking at the quilt show, if that's something that you feel that we, if you feel like that's something we need to keep, we can, we can look into that as well. We need to move forward with it quickly. Possibly Homer Derby. And then for, still be able to do a children's corner, we would still be able to do something with there with, we have like a laser tag or some archery and still be able to do the rock wall possibly. And all these things we have passed and figured out a way that we can do it safely. So.
So you're, you're proposing a somewhat scaled down carnival? Is what I guess I'm hearing?
Yeah, and they're able to spread out and we can, we, I have, because I, the rule follower, trying to follow the rules. And so we can do it. We figured out a way we can do it safely with those items. So yes. And it's.
But no, but no parade?
Um, I don't know how we will pull off the parade. Unless somebody has some magic wand they can wave. I think we can pull off the children's parade and do that in a manner that could still work. But the other parade, I mean, I would love it. I just don't know how that's.
Let me chime in there, Kim.
Possible.
West Bountiful's eliminated their parade. The Handcart Days Parade in Bountiful has been eliminated. Clearfield and Kaysville are trying to pull off a parade.
Did you say are or aren't?
They are, but Clearfield is having a heck of a time getting entries. I just talked with their mayor last night that at this point in the ballgame, they're way down from where they would normally be. I saw that Pioneer Days in Salt Lake is, they're doing a parade on the 23rd. I don't know how they're doing it, how they're passing out tickets, if they're limiting people or if they just televising it like the Macy's Day Parade was last year at Thanksgiving. I just, I don't know that on that. So, so you're, you're.
I wasn't, I wasn't arguing. I was just asking.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to tell you what I found out. And to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any other cities in Davis County that are trying to pull off a parade. But as Kim said, we need a lot of help on that if that's something that we do want to try and pull off is a parade.
One of the things that someone has mentioned, and I think it was Stephanie, what about doing a parade route around town with purely individual entries, much longer path composed of private decorated vehicles?
I think it sounds, I mean, okay, you're posing a question, so.
You're right, that's.
Online city council, but for me, it sounds really, you know, would be fun, I guess. But the problem is it's so long. I don't see people sitting outside waiting for this to come through, like logistically, waiting for them to come down their street. People just aren't going to be sitting outside. I just don't see it. I mean, if it's like just your street, your local, within your, maybe your, each neighborhood did something, but the whole city, I don't, I don't logistically see that. I am also trying to see, I don't know if it's possible, but keeping my fingers crossed. With the parade, having the children's parade, we can have possibly the flyover. I can't promise it yet because it's get that in that process of the approval. But it would have to be around the nine o'clock, between nine and nine thirty, nine, right, right around there. So.
The children's parade's always been the night before.
I understand, but nothing at this point. I mean, people, last year with COVID was like, if we could do an air parade, they're excited, right? So I mean, I love nothing more than to have the full-fledged tradition, but we're not really in that position. So we're doing our best to piece something together. And so.
The Air Force will not do a flyover, or that's what they told us last year, unless there is something going on on the ground at the time.
That's correct. And that's how we can get away with that.
Saying is, you may have done the children's parade the night before in the past. We've got to have some kind of an activity going on to get the flyover.
That's correct.
And like, like I said, all, Councilman McKeon, I'm sorry, I'll let you guys just second. Every city is modifying what they're doing. Nobody's doing to the same extent of what they've done in the past. We're just trying to get something from the morale, excitement of the people that's safe and is a good activity. Councilman McKeon, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we really need to, we're jumping around a little bit. I'd like to settle the one, which is the venue because that's going to drive a lot of the discussions and planning related to that. My viewpoint is, and this is coming from a very practical standpoint, anything that we do as a city should not increase the taxpayer expense astronomically. Contact tracing is a very expensive activity. It costs a lot of money to do that and having lived through that activity on the, on the back end, I would, I would strongly encourage us as a council not to do anything that would potentially create more, you know, taxpayer liability in that way. This is frankly what I thought would happen when I asked and said, hey, we need to really have the county health come out and tour both venues. I thought that they would be more preferential because of the spacing on the other. As to whether that's a permanent thing, I don't think that's even a matter of discussion. I think it, to me, it's what do you do that you can get away with this year that you're not going to get shut down by public health or create problems? And so I said it last time, I still feel that in this particular case, I think that Community Park is the compromise for this year. And then we relook at that when we're back to what normal, normal is.
Thank you, George. Chief, were you going to say something or?
Well, in reference to the idea of a parade that kind of meanders around town. So last year, when all of this was going on and COVID was pretty new and we had graduation going on, we had teacher appreciation parades going on. We did some limited kind of specialized service for communities where in a certain neighborhood, they were recognizing their high school graduates. And there would be, you know, the graduates would be in their car and it was a fairly short little train of cars that I would lead, you know, hitting the license siren here and there and going through the neighborhood. If, if it was kept to something pretty small, not very many cars, like if the council wanted to do something, you guys get in the car, we drive around town. We could probably do that because you wouldn't have to, we'd have to strategically figure out a route where we wouldn't be very disruptive to traffic and crossing roads that are more busy. It would take a while to get around the entire city and I don't know, you know, I don't know. Something to think about, but we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to block intersections. You just have to have a short train of cars, maybe have a couple officers leapfrogging around and catching the more significant intersections. But I just wanted to throw that out there when that suggestion was made.
So I'm proposing we do this, that now, based on, since what we did in the last two weeks and talking with the county, trying to avoid contact tracing in light of what the chief says, that I have our chairs, the colonels, put together kind of an agenda and of what, what, what we can do and what they, what we're able to do with, with the guidelines that we got from the county. And we will bring that back to you, saying, hey, this is, looks like what our celebration is looking like this year. That's what I, that's what I propose. Kim, is that something we could do or?
Sure, but we're at the point that it's action has to be taken. It's not like waiting another, well, let's see and everybody, I need movement. And it's, it's like, I've actually had to move forward or else nothing's going to happen. So with something, right? So I, I need to move forward. So.
Then maybe there's not any more, Kim, than, than, than what you brought up, but you kind of laid out some things that we've been doing. Is, is, is that it? And and is there anything else?
Our intent is to make it a day where we can celebrate and everyone can come together and we're doing our, would be, or do our best to make it. I mean, like last year, everybody was wanting to do something. And so that's what we want to provide. We want to provide things for everybody. Activities, something people can look forward to and still be safe. And be, like we've talked about, inclusive, include the whole city. And I think this, yeah, so, but as far as the, the activities, that's kind of the timeline we're looking at unless you're wanting to make it later in the day, we won't be able to get everything in if we do it later, just later in the day. That's okay, too, but.
So this is what we're proposing. We're proposing, obviously, the fourth is a Sunday, the third, third is a Saturday. We're proposing activities at a community park throughout the third, starting with potentially a children's parade, those booths, a concert in the evening, the fireworks. And like I said, being able to have some sort of celebration this year versus not having anything at all, like some cities are still not going to do. And a little modification, but it's something that's, that's, that's out there for people to get excited about.
Could I ask a couple of questions? Where, when you say children's parade, I, I know what has traditionally been done. Where are you considering doing that and what timing are you?
You know, I mean, here, let me just look at this. I mean, you know, our tradition was in the evening, right? It's six and it starts off the parade, off the, the event. So I trying to, at least, you know, do we, because we don't have the other parade. So do, the thought is, you know, do we do it in the morning at nine so we can still have the flyover? I'm trying to keep as much as we can possible. So if that, at least the children's parade, we could have that and then that started maybe. If I can show my screen, is that okay? Jake, how do I do this?
I have no control over that.
Is it okay if I hit share screen? I'm not sure which screen is going to do.
You do have permission to share your screen. So if you hit the share screen button, then you'll select preferred methods, select the app and not necessarily the screen that you want to look at. So you have to have the map open in a window?
I do.
Okay, so if you hit share, you should get options and you select which one is the map. And then hit share, I believe, down at the bottom.
I think it's this one. Share. Let's just hope. No, that's not the right one. That's the other one.
Yeah, so you're sharing your screen on this and not necessarily just the app, but I, if you can zoom in this, I mean, you can't really zoom in.
That's not the right one. So how do I make that, that's the other location? So how to go back? Okay, hang on a second. New share, right?
So right now you're sharing screen two.
Desktop. Hmm, I apologize. Hang on a second.
Chance, you could email it to me real quick.
Okay, you know what I think I need to do? And I apologize. I think I need to move this. If I hit screen share in desktop two.
Yeah, so you're going to share your entire desktop with desktop two, or you can actually select PDF, your do.
Sorry, guys. Let's see if I can do this one more time.
This.
All right, PDF.
Because I think you have it open in PDF, right? There you go.
You see it now?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the park, obviously, of parking here on this side. And then let me just scroll. Okay, so this is the stake center up on the church up on Main Street. There's tons of parking here and then doing the parade. And they come down into here. So whether we then take it around, you know, the park or if it's too long, or I mean, I don't know, we, there's, we have options. Or do we just end it there and they get popsicles? Or do we, you know, have them go around or, I mean, again, or we can take them through down here and end here. I mean, we have options, right? So that's kind of what the option would be possibly.
And in order to get the flyover, that possibility, like we talked about, we, we have, as Councilman has brought up, we have to have this event going on in the morning, correct?
That's correct.
That's what it was last year. I have not.
That is the same, that is the case.
Yeah, so this, this would allow a flyover to happen in the morning because this would be, be, be an activity that would be taking place.
Does that, Stephanie, does that help the?
I'm trying to visualize the length of it. I know the, the evening and having it be cooling after as the kids are getting tired and then need to get from the end of the parade back to wherever they came from has been convenient. So I'm trying to figure what's the, what's the relative distance of this?
Okay, so usually, so the here, you're concerned that it might be hotter in, more hot in the morning?
By the time they end, because by then they're tired because they've gone the distance of the parade and then it's also heating up. So trying to get them from there to back to wherever they came from, that's, that's my concern there.
The distance is very similar to the distance of the children's parade in the other.
That is the, that is true. It's actually, the other location is twenty, a little over 2,500 feet in length. And it's at a, the more hot time of the day. So we have a better chance of being cooler in the morning because by, your hottest time of the day is by five. So between five and six, it's probably the, it's going to be more hot in the evening than it would be in the morning.
And, and Kim, this is.
And is it downhill?
It's more, it would be more downhill. I'll have to walk that again.
So they would be going back uphill to get back to where they started from. Or car, or likely to be.
I don't, I guess I'd have to go walk, walk that.
Not much elevation change.
Yeah, I don't think the elevation change, the elevation change would be more, I think, up on Jennings, but not, I don't remember that being large elevation.
When you said from the chapel on Main Street, are you talking the one that's at about seven, 1600 North, Fort 1500 North?
Yes, that's correct. And then Smoot is over, I think.
That's actually a fairly good elevation change, I think.
It's not, I don't think that's a steep elevation.
I don't know, the kids, kids can, they'll be at the, the, the park. I don't know if their parents pick them up or if they walk back. Some have walked back in the past. But anyway, this, this is.
Well, I have one other thing. I mean, it's, and I don't know, different people, different things. Maybe they'll go back home. Maybe they'll, maybe they'll come stay at the park and they'll find a spot. Or I mean, there's place for them to put their bikes or put their stuff, whereas the other location, really, there's not. They don't have a space for that. So they actually would have a place to hang out or if they, if they so choose. And spread out. I mean, there's going to be a lot of space. So I think, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Kim, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Is any other questions or concerns about it that I can address? Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move to item number three. This is municipal code amendments, newspaper noticing amendments. Lisa, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a few items on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a few items on the agenda today. I've been looking at the twenty twenty one legislative session and just wanted to bring forward a few um ordinance amendments to make sure we're still in line with the state code and also take advantage of of these amendments. Um, so the the first two, the first item that I have is a ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh eight regarding newspaper notice, and these are amendments to our municipal code. Um, they also changed the uh statutory reference to the Utah Public Notice website. Um, and so I've just throughout our code, I've searched wherever we say Utah Public Notice website, and I'm taking out that state code reference, um because there were two competing statutes and they renumbered it in different numbers. And I just decided let's just eliminate our reference and they can decide what where it's gonna land. Um, and so these are pretty minor amendments. Um, also just bringing this notice of election up to the May first date and um there were some some auditing. So there's just a couple of places where we no longer have to provide newspaper notice, because as you know, the noted, the most newspapers are going to once a week print. Um, so this was a good time to run some legislation to reduce newspaper noticing. Um, I'm in favor of these changes because I don't think newspaper noticing is is our most effective means of uh reaching our citizens. And I think the legislature, um, you know, finally agrees with that, and they're trying to emphasize the Utah Public Notice website and our own city website. So on our audits, we no longer have to post it in the newspaper, um as well as our uh the tentative budget is just a reference, but um also the public hearing on our uh final budget. So anyway, I'm recommending these amendments to our municipal code, and then I will be bringing forward sometime in May or perhaps June. Um, the amendments to our zoning code, which we'll be excited about as well, reducing a number of the newspaper noticing requirements there. But those amendments have to go to the Planning Commission first. So um, anyway, uh, this does not require a public hearing. It's just a municipal code amendment. And so we're staff recommending approval of these these ordinance amendments, eliminating newspaper noticing where now allowed by statute.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one sixteen.
Second.
Uh, motion of second, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here's pairs that passes unanimously. Okay, let's go to item number four, uh procurement policy amendments. Uh, newspaper noticing amendments again, uh, this is resolution twenty twenty one dash sixteen. Lisa, anything on this one?
Yeah, so these, again, they're eliminating the newspaper noticing for some of our bid requirements, but they have added in some uh odd requirements that we now have to post them in five different places of the city. Um, and one is for three days and one is for twenty. Anyway, I I just wish they had been consistent, but I forwarded these on to um all of our department heads and the city engineer, anybody that does any kind of bid. Um, so we can talk about, you know, make sure that we're following these new uh state statutes. And you'll notice that the effective date, I should have mentioned this with the municipal code amendments, will be May fifth. Um, all of these statutory amendments adopted by the legislature go into effect on May, well, are effective May fourth. So anyway. Um, so we're recommending these amendments to uh the procurement policy as well.
So so I I may a copa, I'm working off of a very small screen, and I actually motioned for twenty 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 one sixteen, which is when we're now talking about the twenty 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 one oh eight, which is one that you had already briefed us on. I don't know if it's gonna be a huge problem, but when the motion comes out, it probably should be for twenty twenty one oh eight is the other one, right?
Yeah, well, maybe you could, why don't you just make that motion to correct the motion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear which number you had there, so.
No, usually I work on a screen about nine times the size, so.
Yeah, and usually your audio is a lot better, so.
Yeah, that too.
So yeah, just make a a motion to correct that. That would be great for the record.
Well, let me do, let me go ahead and do that. Let me, let me motion that we adopt twenty twenty one oh eight.
Second.
Okay, we have motion of second on adopting twenty twenty one dash oh eight. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 So that passes unanimously. Now we can go to the next one.
Thank you.
Which would be a motion to adopt twenty twenty one dash sixteen.
Second.
We have motion of the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. Okay, the next one. Now, this is one, uh Lisa's again, but this is one that, you know, we passed our targeted picketing ordinance and Senator Wyler said there's no way that the legislature is gonna touch it, but they did deal with it. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, they did. And uh the legislature adopted HB two ninety one, actually adopting a statewide um criminal statute prohibiting uh targeted residential picketing. And I I thought that the state statute was really interesting, you know, I think when we adopted our own ordinance, I had mentioned that a lot of the ordinances out there are very similar, and they're based on this you know, seminal case in in the nineteen eighties. And so you'll see that there are not that many changes to our ordinance um to to bring it into um compliance with the state statute. Uh, I I thought about recommending that we just repeal our ordinance, um because usually when then, when there's a state statute, um we prefer to just go with the state statute and not create a conflict. Um, but I do think that it was important that Centerville adopted this ordinance, and so I thought maybe politically we might want to just leave it on the books for a few years. Um, I did also send this ordinance out um to the chief and some other staff and um, you know, the chief did say that we, the department would probably just enforce the state statute rather than our local, um just because they have uh set uh fine schedules and things like that. But anyway, I if we want to keep this on the books, these are the amendments that I'm recommending to bring it into um compliance with the state uh targeted residential picketing statute. And then you'll note um that the state statute does have something that our ordinance did not, which is the exclusions. And so we were just silent as to whether or not you could walk by a house. But when I was talking about the the case law is that you probably can walk by a house, but you can't stand there and picket somebody's uh front yard. And so the the state statute specifically spells out that it doesn't apply um to someone that is just that proceeds through a residential neighborhood or proceeds past a residence. So again, we're just gonna have to decide how many times can you walk by. But anyway, that's in the statute. I also thought it was interesting that they, the state added some distance requirements where, you know, we had a certain distance within a hundred feet of the property. But the state also said, which was what we were trying to deal with, is you can't protest right in front of the targeted residence. And and the state said you can't stand in in the neighbor immediately adjacent to to that residence. So I think that's kind of nice. You actually have to be two properties away. Um, so anyway, I I recommend we, you know, leave it on the books and and, you know, decide later if we want to repeal this, but um I do think it makes a statement and so I'm just recommending these changes. And again, this one does not require a public hearing.
Any questions for Lisa on that?
I'm gonna try some different audio and see if this works better for people. You know, I I really appreciate the council going going uh down the road on this one. It I think it's sent a clear message, and I'm glad that 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 message was heard elsewhere in other communities and at a state level. So I'm happy coming into compliance with the with the state law and just doing the the amendments necessary to make sure ours is mirroring it. So I would um motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty one eleven targeted residential picketing amendments.
Second.
We have a motion of second, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
That sounds unanimous. Opposed? That is unanimous. And Councilman McEwen, uh, thank you for those comments. We appreciated that, all that you guys did on the other one, but uh uh, so I agree. Good. Uh, thank you, Lisa, for bringing us in compliance with the the stated ordinance.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the summary action calendar. This is a uh new vehicle purchase of a pickup truck. Um in your notes, you'll notice that this is for the Parks and Rec Department. I don't know if there's anybody who wants to speak on this, or if you guys have any questions on it, or you just want to uh approve this purchase, uh the motion to approve this purchase.
I'd make a motion to approve the item in the summary action calendar.
We have one question. This is just a boring white truck, right? No flashy special colors?
Twenty-two inch wheels. Um, it's definitely got a dual, I'm just, it's just a simple, actually, it's utility. Um, if you read it with a grapple, grapple bucket.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to verify that, just based on on comments that have come in from other flashy trucks in other municipalities. We just want to make sure that it's meeting the need, but not overly flashy.
Nope, not overly flashy. We are seeing increase in vehicle costs, and Chief can attest to that. And this is one of those where we budgeted one item, but six months later, it's definitely gone up in price. So luckily, I appreciate Bruce in finding the savings somewhere else, so we're not going over budget in the department.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion of second. Let's do a roll call vote based on the amount of the purchase. Uh, Councilwoman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman McEwen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ivy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fillmore.
Aye.
And Councilman Nance.
Aye.
So that motion passes five zero. Thank you. Uh, let's let's guide the move to item number seven. This is the quarterly financial report taking us through March. And uh Jake, you're gonna go over that with us, correct?
Yep, I'll go over that here. Let me just, I almost share my screen with you here. Okay. All right, so I'm just gonna go over some of the uh the high level stuff. I'm gonna start here with the cash position. Can I show you the year after year? I'm gonna talk about the two largest funds right here. Our general fund, last year, March, uh, we were at one point eight million. Right now, we're at three point seven. And most of that is due to the uh COVID money that we received. We have a little bit more, well, a little bit, quite a bit more in sales tax than we had this year uh compared to last year. It's also because um, there's a a little bit more of that administrative charge coming out of the three other funds, the the water, the drainage and sanitation. And that's because we moved the deputy public works position that was in water into the public works admin. And so to pay for that, for his work that's done in those funds, we have that administrative charge. So that's, that's why you see that difference between last year and this year. So again, most of it is that the the COVID money. We go to the next screen. Well, you can see, this is our uh our cash on hand, just kind of uh breaking it down by funds. There's there's not much to report there, but if we go in here, I can explain a few things here. Um, the the first one that you see here is this increase. I kind of explained that one, why we have an increase there, the two hundred four six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight compared to March twenty twenty. All right, and that's in our sales tax. So that's that increase. And then, of course, you're seeing right here the cares revenue. And we'll have more of that before the end of the year when we get done um using the rest of it. So there's gonna be about four hundred thousand more dollars in there compared to last year. And then, of course, here, you see that four hundred forty thousand, that's that increase in the admin fee that I was talking about, mainly due to um the deputy uh public works director shifting that from the water fund strictly into the public works admin fund. And you'll see that overall, that increase is is due mostly to those those things right there, as well as some increased revenue overall.
So Jake, when you do that, will you go back and historically reflect the same adjustment in prior years?
Yeah, we can do that. Yes.
I'm just asking, are you planning to?
Am I planning to? Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Now, if you look here, um, in administration, we have, you're gonna see this in a few places where there's a higher payroll. And that's because of payouts, because we've had some resignations and some retirements. So here in admin, um, there was two positions there. Um, as well as down here, you see here, uh, City Hall, government buildings, that was a custodian that just retired. Um, and and right here, uh, to explain this one, this is the engineering line. Can you guys see my pointer? So you're not confused about where I'm talking about. You guys can all see this, right, or my?
Yeah, but I don't have a magnifying glass for the screen.
Maybe if I can, I can't really highlight it. I'm moving stuff around a little bit. But anyways, so we show an increase here in the engineering quite a bit. We're up to sixty thousand. And we're over budget, and that's mainly because we've been working with um the Ferguson Group on these grant applications. And we've been using Kevin quite a bit. So that's explanation for that, that increase there, and hopefully we'll be getting.
Could you kick the PDF size up to like a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty percent? Because I mean, it's just barely readable.
Uh, there's one ten. Is that better?
I can, I can read it much better now.
How about one twenty? There you go. How's that? Now we're better? Okay, all right. Okay, so that's, that's general fund. Uh, that's where, you know, I'm generally looking at over here where we have the eighty percent, hundred and ten percent explaining some of those differences. We should be at seventy-five percent for the most part on these operating expenses. All right. Now, if we go down into here into the RDA, uh, this is gonna look a lot different next month because uh we actually received all of our money and and we're gonna have all of the developer-related payments that are gonna be going out uh Thursday, actually. But to show you here, uh, follow all the arrows here, okay? Right here, this is where we would be receiving revenue from the theater for the rent. And we have two thousand there, and and that's mostly interest that's sitting there from the TRF account as it's, we we put them both into that same account. So that's interest only. There aren't any lease payments there. So we're we're missing some of this. Wherever you see any other increases, this is a use of uh, oh, I'm sorry, that's the current, sorry, but we amended that for the purchase of the uh rental property. And you'll see the offsetting expense is down here. So inside of that, transfer the Parks and Utopia Fund. That's that three hundred and fifty thousand we transferred to the Parks Fund to pay for that rental property. All right. And of course, admin fee, admin fee is gone up slightly. That's mostly because of operating costs of of what that's offsetting. Recreation Fund, um, if you remember last year, when when COVID happened, we'd already purchased all of our baseball equipment. And so this year, to compensate for that, they've kept the baseball equipment. So the expenses are lower. And of course, the transfer from the general fund that would have normally paid for that baseball stuff is lower as well. That's why you see those lower numbers on both of those within the recreation fund. Rap Tax Fund, this is good news. Uh, this is one we're going to need to amend because it is tied to the the council's eighty-five five 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 policy and how we distribute that money. But we're at eighty-five percent where we should be at seventy, well, we could be at seventy-five, but we're at eighty-five. So we're over budget on our revenue. And and because it is tied to those percentages, the expenditures will be over as well. So that, expect that as an amendment in a couple of months. Then, right here, this is good news. Uh, this is our last payment for the uh the theater. Uh, this will be the last of our sales tax revenue bond. So it's May first, we are gonna have a bond maturation party. You guys are all invited. I'll let you know more details later on that one.
Where?
Where are we gonna have it?
Yeah.
We'll probably have it at City Hall. So we'll we'll get the invitations out for you. Not sure what we're gonna do yet. Maybe throw money around? I don't know.
I'm just sure we're not gonna hold it at the theater.
Hey, that was, it's not a bad idea. Spread out there. All right, this is a typo. This should say Smith Park. Sorry about that. But this is, this is just the expense that, hey, look, I can fix it right here. Can you guys see that? There we are. So right here is that same thing that we saw in the RDA with the transfer of the three hundred and fifty thousand going into the Park Improvement Fund to pay for that park or pay for the 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 home and the lot and the future development, which should be happening here soon. And then uh this is what we have remaining of the Island View Park, the construction on the from this last summer. So you see that there. So we're in good shape when it comes to the to the park fund. We're gonna see more coming out of there as well because uh we haven't paid. We're gonna see more coming out of there as well, because we haven't paid yet on the lease that we have on Island View. So that's gonna drop down significantly. Transportation Fund is looking healthy. It does show that we are still have a net negative on that of 214,000, but we should be getting our our next installment of taxes next month, which is gonna jump this up quite a bit and way past that 214,000. So yeah, we're at 97% of our expenses. But just like all of our capital projects that go over a summer, and most of the time, we are making the payments in the fiscal, the the next fiscal year, so the beginning of the fiscal year. So the same thing will happen for the fiscal or for the projects that happen this summer. We'll be paying for them in July and August. So we're always in a deficit when it comes to these capital improvement. So fortunately, Transportation, for example, we have a little over a million dollars in fund balance in that Transportation Fund, so we can float that. We could float that money in those those projects. This is just an explanation here that we're a little bit low on the Utopia pledge payment. You'll notice we're low on another one later on, and that was just because we did have an incident here in in March. One of our employees was out for a while, wasn't able to to make the ACH payment. She's the only person that that can get into the system and make that transfer. But they have been made, so that you'll see that this is caught up in the next monthly financial report. Water Fund here, everything's right on target. You can see there's the 75, the safe 78, and this is actually really a good thing, the 78%. Because a lot of the things that we pay for, we pay for upfront. So you're actually gonna see this dwindle off, and then I'm estimating we're gonna hit 90 to 95% almost operating cost, but we'll probably still hit the 100% on our operating revenue. Right, Sanitation Fund, it's right on. You can see 75% on what we've collected, 72% on what we've spent. That's gonna go up a little bit because we just had the spring cleanup. So we'll probably leapfrog a little bit, because we are going to, we're projecting that we're gonna dip into our fund balance, but that is something that we budgeted for. Again, in the Drainage Utility, it's looking good. Yeah, we've collected 77%. So 2% more than we were projecting. And we're at 58% in operating, which is good. We're over mainly because the decant station, it costs more. So we are going to have to amend this budget. And we're we're going to need to use some of the fund balance to pay for the overage on the decant station. And that's partially because less was done last fiscal year as compared to this fiscal year, some delays in invoicing and actually getting the project done. But again, this is another one of those healthy funds where we have over a million dollars in fund balance. So so we're okay there. This was the other one I was talking about, the take, the timing for the for Utopia. And this is what we actually remit to Utopia for the signups and and the payoffs for the the connections to the home. And so we're we're only at 57%. And you'll see that next month, that will be caught up. So we'll be back up to the 86%. With that, the rest of the financials are the the details on each of the line items. Open it up to all of you, Council. Thank you for listening to this exciting presentation. If you have any questions, I can answer those now for you.
Thank you then, Jake, for presenting it. I'd love to tell you, said it to the end, like you're presenting us a marketing proposal. It was great.
It's great, isn't it?
Thank you, Jake, for doing that. If there's no questions, then Council will move to item number eight. This is Minutes Review and Acceptance of the April 6, 2020 Work Session and the April 6, 2021 Regular Session City Council. Do we have any changes on those, or do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So I didn't have to feel.
Motion to adopt the minutes as recorded.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. All right, thank you. Item number nine, this is City Council Report from Councilmember Ems. Do you, if he has anything to report? Do you?
So my primary activities are on the Centerville Community Corps, which is emergency response and the Tree Board. Both are continuing to meet by Zoom. Last Thursday, the 15th, was the Great Utah Shakeout. Centerville participated both at the city offices and with a drill within the five districts of the city. One of the activities was a search of the Public Works Building. We had eight members of the Student Council hidden, not hidden, placed as victims, and they were located by a search team correspondingly of eight people. That went off well. There's always a little bit of joviality when there's something like that, and there's not a specific event. But people were there with their emergency response gear. Bruce did some training on what ought to be in a person's cert bag. And and it was effective. The other thing that we did was we had eight specific incidents where there was municipal infrastructure damage placed around the city, two in each of the districts. Out of the eight, five of the eight were located, three of the eight, eight were not located in the basically 45-minute timeframe to locate them. And the ones that didn't locate their specific incidents have made commitments to do a better job next time. Again, we had, we we didn't get as good a participation on our red, yellow, green cards as we've had at times in the past. Next time we do it, we probably really need to focus on that. We haven't handed out a large volume of those cards in the last several years. The red, yellow, green are designed to be an easy way for neighborhood block captains to identify who needs help in the case of an emergency. All in all, a little bit of practice is is always helpful, and it went off well. Tree Board is meeting and providing some recommendations to people about trees. There, we participated in a National Arbor Day Conference back in early March. There were some interesting things. One of the things that I would like to see us try to implement is that nationally Arbor Tree Cities, excuse me, not Arbor, Tree Cities are encouraging the use of varying trees so that if there is a bug problem, we don't lose all of a particular thing and half of the trees in town. How we're gonna implement that through recommendations, we don't really know. But that was one of the interesting things I got from the conference. I guess that's the end of my report unless somebody has any questions.
Councilman Ems, your Chair of the Tree Bar, Gary Woodward, has asked me to sign a proclamation month of maybe that Tree Tree Month is, did you get, did you guys discuss that at all?
Yes, it's been discussed, and please do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
They there, people are working on planting projects. Parks is working with us. And we, they're gonna be posting some things on the website, encouraging people to plant trees and not plant the same thing that's already every place.
Great. Sounds great. Thank you. Any other questions for Councilman Ems? All right, let's move on to the Mayor's Report. Okay. Parks are open for reservations for the Boweries. South Davis Metro Fire, they had some people up, not in our city, but up in Bountiful, near Mueller Parks, and kids that were, couple fires were set. And they put up cameras to try and catch these kids, and they must have got wind what was going on or saw them putting up the cameras. So that fortunately, that problem was solved here, here a month or so back. And so that 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 was a good thing. Let's see. Kettity and Christiansen was selected as WASAT Integrated Waste Management's Auditor. And then, what else do I have? I think I'll leave a couple of these other items for Brent unless he doesn't bring them up. And then, oh, League of City and Towns meetings are going on this week. I, it appears that maybe one or two of us are already down here looking at George in a different room and Brandon in a different room. And so if, I don't know at this point in time, I I noticed in going through the agenda last night that some of it's virtual. I don't know if if you, any want to get in on virtual, if that's still options available or not. But to my, those things, those start, I thought it usually starts Wednesday, but it looks like it starts Thursday. Is that right, George? From what you've seen on the agenda, I don't want to miss anything here.
Yeah, no, it looks like it's it's just open registration tomorrow, starting at three, so. Yeah. Can dig on Thursday.
Yeah, so those that are here, great. Those that could participate virtual, that some of the sessions are doing virtual, I noticed, the the agenda. Please do, and we'll have some reports that we'll come back with from that. And then the, I think that's probably about all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me. Great, let's go to item number 11, City Manager Report, Brent.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I only have a couple of things to report. UC May Conference has been great so far. Councilmember Ansel, I'll share with you. We had a great discussion about emergency management yesterday. Dustin Lewis is the one who led that discussion. He's the assistant down in South Jordan, but he used to be an intern under Steve Thacker, and he has a degree in emergency management. So we had a really good discussion and talked about some of the, you know, never have a NOC in the basement of City Hall, and I'm like, dang it. Radio issues and whatnot. But anyway, he he gave a really great presentation, trainings that could be attended. And Councilmember Ansel, when we get back, I'll report back to you, Chief and Bruce. Do have a few ideas that we might be able to improve on at City Hall. Second, I just want to make you aware, Mark Marchant contacted me. ACE is proposing not picking up recycling on the 400 East during the construction. I've asked Mark to kind of push back on them a little bit and say if they're not gonna pick that up, can they use the second can as normal trash? And if that's the case, then can they eliminate that fee that we need to pay, and they'll pick up that can for free? So just over the course of the summer, there may not be any recyclables picked up. But I do want to get some marketing information out to the residents along 400 East of where they can take their recyclables if they still so choose. I know some people are very passionate about it, so we want to make sure they're aware of the locations for them. But we'll, I'll keep you updated on that, but that is one proposal they have, just trying to reduce the amount of traffic through 400 East and picking up trash, which I can understand and appreciate. But I do want to pass on any savings to our residents if we can with that service not being provided. Other than that, Mayor.
Can I ask a question?
You sure can.
I've had several comments slash complaints of late about whether or not the recycle function is worth doing these days. About the fact that some stuff goes to recycle and then just goes to the same dump. So it goes in a recycle can, we pay the extra, and then it goes to the dump. And and it's all, I totally admit, it's all anecdotal. But there's a number of people who are convinced that it's an absolute farce and and a waste of time and money.
I'll lead it off, then I'm gonna hand it off to Jacob. I I have been communicating with a resident and who has expressed that concern, and and it's not anecdotal completely. There are times where recyclables will end up in the landfill for various reasons, which could include a contamination of the recyclables, right? So there is that possibility of recyclables ending up there. WASAT Integrated is American, confirmed. They do have a great sorter now that, and I had an opportunity to tour that with Nathan Rich a while ago. But there there is some truth to it, but there's reasons for it. It's not a matter of just saying, hey, now we don't want to make the trip to the recycle center. There there are protocol and guidelines of of when and when they can't. So I'll hand it off to Jacob, and he can share a report we just received from ACE about that.
Yeah, so the report we received from ACE this last year, anything that's been taken out of our recycling cans in the recycling vehicle has been taken to a recycling facility. Once it's been dropped at the recycling facility, all except for the, I think it's about 30%, which get audited once a month. But they'll take a truck load and they'll take a section of it, and they'll test it for contaminants. If it does have contaminants, the entire load is is ruined, and that does have to go to the landfill. That does happen on occasion. So yes, it's true, not all the recycling is gonna wind up there. But the reason why is because it's contaminated by what was put into the truck from the resident inside the can in the first place. So 100% of it does go to the recycling facility. It gets sorted. Some of it gets tested for contamination. If it's contaminated, yes, it goes to the landfill.
Oh, to add on to that, though, with the collapse of the recyclables market, how much of this is actually getting sold on to post-processors or just, again, ending up in a landfill? Because China is not taking our trash right now, and they were one of our major recyclers for a lot of the cardboards and other things that we have.
Well, Brent actually shared with me what happens to most of these materials. Most of them do actually get turned into energy.
Yeah, so that's the the WASAT Integrated, and you have this energy idea. There, there's definitely truth to that, Councilmember McEwen. That's, we definitely live in a different environment here, right? In Germany, you had five, you had five bins in your apartment, and one was for glass, one was for, you know, your food, another one was for styrofoam. Anyway, everything was separated, and you had to take it downstairs and keep it separated. And and that's just the way they have to live because they don't have the space for landfills here. It costs us to recycle, so people recycling is is more of a feel-good. We need to do, we want to help better the planet. But it costs money because there just isn't a market for it. And you're starting to see some of these, and Councilmember Fillmore shared that Farmington had a flyer that they're starting to take styrofoam. What else? Councilmember Fillmore was on that flyer? Glass? Is that what it was? I can't remember what it was.
Plastic bags. It was a.
So there is less of a market, and it costs to recycle. I was part of a a project down in Yuma where we were starting the recycling, and we had to pay them to take the recycling. Luckily, we found very inexpensive labor to sort it through Republic, Urepublic, but it costs money to recycle. And and the market has definitely shifted. Cardboard is more expensive. Just hauling the material through the trucks is is not making it cost-effective any longer. There is that challenge we're faced with. It it definitely is something we should try to do to to protect the planet, reduce the landfill. But it's just, it has, it costs. Somebody has to pay. Whether it's the city, the consumer, or the post-consumer, Councilmember McEwen, as you're saying, is going to pay for that cost.
And and let me just let you know, just refresh your memory how it works with ACE. We actually don't have to pay any tipping fee for the recycling. And if the idea behind that is if they get any revenue actually from providing those recyclables to the recycling facility, they would keep that revenue. So we have that as an agreement, and because of that, the cost to the the to the residents for that can, for the recycling can, is actually less than the solid waste can. So if we are, if we were to shift to all just solid waste, we're actually going to have to pay the tipping fees on the recycling. So I mean, that's purely from a fiscal standpoint for the city.
There is an incentive. That's correct.
Okay.
But it's shifting. And any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brad, did you have more?
I'll end there unless there is something you want me to go into detail about.
Yeah, can I ask a question? You got any more update on what we can spend some of the infrastructure money on and CARES Act money on?
The American Rescue Plan?
Yeah.
I checked this morning. The last update we've had was April 15th, and and on their website, on the Treasury, it says, information will be coming soon to this website. information will be coming soon to this website.
I I did participate in a an ICMA Regional Conference virtually last week. And there was a session on on some of these discussions. But again, they were a little vague on some of the ideas. They were more more focused on selling the idea of priority-based budgeting, which is a conversation we may have one day versus line item budgeting. But anyway, we did discuss a few of these ideas, but they were reluctant to go into the specific details of the infrastructure.
Okay.
We're hoping to.
I know I know the Ferguson Group will let us know immediately when it happens.
Yeah, within hours, they usually do.
Thanks, Councilman Enz, for the question. Thank you, Brad, for your presentation. I'm not aware of a closed session item. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We do.
We do have a closed session item.
We do need to go into closed session, Mr. Mayor, character competency of an individual.
Motion to go into a closed session, discuss the character competence of an individual as provided by law with no intent to return to public, to a public session.
Second.
All right, I'll favor I.
Aye.
Aye.
We got a different channel we're going to?
I believe Jennifer has sent the next link, and she has, yeah. So she's sent you the new link for the next Zoom. So I'll I'll see you there shortly.